I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting Wednesday, July 11th at 7:05 PM. The first order of business is continued public hearing of case number 2018-06, Andrew and Ruth Parker. Are they representative yet? Want to join us, Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. As you recall, at the last meeting, there was some discussion with the town attorney about the status of this property. Since that time, we have gone through it very carefully, and I think we've come to a resolution that will obviate the need for variance. So, at Attorney Tom's suggestion, we've asked that this be put over in anticipation of a withdrawal, just in case there's any glitches with the paperwork. So, we anticipate that before the next meeting, we will throw the application. But we do want to keep it alive, just in case. So, I'm not sure when the deadline is for this.
Thirty-first of February.
So, we'll execute it, an extension.
Okay.
Say at the end of August or something.
Okay.
So that, you know, nothing falls through the cracks.
So, you'll, if we grant your 30-day extension, you'll give us a 30-day extension on the decision.
Right.
If it's not needed, it's not needed, but it'll be in place. Okay. Is that something you could draft tonight?
We have a form.
We do have a form.
Maria does, but he's not here.
You're sitting under a seat.
Sorry.
If you can just write it up, Henry, that'll be fine.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, so, the applicant's representative is looking for a continuance on case number 2018-06, Andrew and Ruth Parker. Do we have a motion?
Tell me.
A second. Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Holland, to grant a continuance to Andrew and Ruth Parker, 42 Shore Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That would be for Thursday, until our next meeting in August.
August eight. August eight at seven.
So, is there any fear?
Yeah, August eight.
Well, August meeting. Okay. The next order of business tonight is case number 2018-09. It was a public hearing for Louis Tassino, 103 Shore Drive.
It's not 7:15 yet.
Oh, it's not. Thank you, Pam. All right, we're gonna do a little administrative work. We can't open that hearing until 7:15. The board is in receipt of paperwork for the Board of Selectmen saying that they have reappointed Mr. Tassino and Mrs. Holmes to June 30th of 2021. Congratulations to both of you.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Long time. Will you want longer?
This one. Who's got a name here? So, Parker will be 7:15.
Yeah.
Parker?
Yep. Which of all those will?
Yeah, won't happen. So, we'll keep that in mind. We could schedule the next one at 7:15, though. Is that where you won't have a half hour?
Right. The, we also have, as everybody knows, we have a vacancy on the board, and the Board of Selectmen received an applicant from Mrs. Jennifer Holland for the alternate position. I believe everybody got a copy of their, of her application.
Where's the copy, Henry?
It should be in the packet room.
She related it.
I don't know. Would that be a problem for them?
If she has any luck, no.
I don't know.
Exactly.
Actually, she's here. If you want to introduce yourself to the board, feel free.
I can stand up.
You can do either.
My name's Jennifer Holland. I've been a resident here in Douglas since 2004, where I raised my now teenage sons. I am also a full-time Realtor in town, and I have been eager to get involved a little bit more in the community and serve the community and really get a full understanding of the regulations around zoning. Like I said, give back to the community. I'm originally from Oxford. I grew up in a similar small town, and would like to give back to this town.
Anybody have any questions?
I do. I just quickly glanced at your information. And you're top-producing Realtor. Congratulations. I guess what I wonder about is, are you gonna have any trouble scheduling your business and family around attending meetings? Because that's one of the prime things we're looking for, is somebody that can devote the time.
Right, right, I understand. If I'm going to commit to something, it'll be scheduled in. Being a Realtor, you need to have a pretty tight schedule and pretty time management.
Good. So, you'd put this as a priority, then?
It'll be a priority. It won't get shifted around, and luckily, you know, meeting every day is.
And feeling consistent, too.
Yeah, and I'm, like I said, I'm in the community, so actively driving around, seeing what's going on. I think that's really important, to have something that's gonna be extremely engaged.
I don't have any more questions.
Mr. Chairman, anybody else have questions on this application? If not, the Board of Selectmen is looking for a recommendation from us.
Who did we recommend? Ms. Holland as the alternate appointment?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Holland to appoint Mrs. Holland as an alternate, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we'll ask community development office to get a letter out to the Board of Selectmen recommending their appointment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any minutes.
No. We're moving too fast. At light speed.
We're gonna start the next hearing in two minutes. Can't start it earlier than it was advertised.
This one wasn't advertised late, or was it?
All right, the next agenda item is case number 2018-09, and that case also, a continuance was requested by the applicant Louis Tassino through his attorney Gerald Sugar. Mr. Sugar has asked for the continuation in writing, and he has also granted the board 30 days additional to make a decision on that as well. So, the board would like to.
I'll move that we allow for a continuance on this case.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Holland, to grant the continuance request from Attorney General Sugar for Mr. Tassino. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Continuance is granted.
You only got 15 more minutes.
Well, I think we can, we have some discussion items that we could probably discuss. So, on our, we have 15 minutes before the next public hearing. So, we did have some items under discussion. We handled, took care of the first one, the alternate application. Second one is a letter we got from North Brown, I'm sorry, North Village. Would you like to join us? The ones that join us still wait if you'd like.
Ed Typhley, I represent North Brown LLC. On July 5th, I sent the ZBA letter, which was a result of meeting with town officials regarding the project the day before the holiday. What this concerns is a paragraph in the amended memorandum of understanding that is attached and made a part of our comp permit on this project, and it relates to the water system and water tower parcel on North Street. In, as way of background, when we were going through the permitting, the water, in discussing the water, there is an eight-inch existing water line on North Street, which provides sufficient water supply for domestic water purposes in accordance with DEP regulations, but doesn't meet IOs or ISO recommendations regarding fire flow. And that's true for our project and also true for all of the houses on North Street and all the subdivisions off of North Street. So, in formulating the MOU at the time, this was also a time when the town was interested in or pursuing or considering the development of the Pine Parcel between 146 and North Street. And reviewing the FST report, which was the engineer for the Water Department at the time, and Stantec, which was our engineer at the time, it identified essentially two ways of dealing with the issue. One would be the, to construct a water tower on North Street or in the northern part of town, which would increase the flow in the North Street line and would also provide for any future development of the industrial area. One of the recommendations of FST, going back to 2004, when they did a report on the industrial area, was that the, and also in their 2009 master plan that they did for the Water Department, was that the water lines on Gilboa and on North Street be increased from the eight-inch line to a 12-inch line, that they be looped, and that provision be made for a water tower in order to adequately serve any industrial development that might happen between those two. So, we had proposed, since we had the only property in that part of town which was suitable for the water tower, which was its sufficient height, we had proposed to donate a parcel to the town for that water tower. And we did. Once we started, once we started work on the project, that was one of the first things we did, was donate that property to the town. The provision in the MOU provides that if the town constructs the water tower or begins construction of the water tower prior to our commencing construction of the project, that we would donate an additional $82,000 to the town for that purpose, being roughly the cost that we estimated at that time to install the alternative. And the alternative was, in the event that the town didn't construct the water tower, that we would put in a booster pump that would be capable of meeting the recommended IOS fire flows, which are 750 gallons per minute at 20 PSI. So, and it also provided that we could begin construction and could construct and get occupancy permits for a number of permits, a number of building, or units before, before we had to do that. So, once we began construction, we began looking at the situation, and it became clear that the town was not going to do anything in terms of constructing the water tower. And the Water Department has recently informed us that they really have no intention of constructing the water tower. So, that left the alternative of putting in the booster pump. So, we began to look at the design of that, wanting to use Stantec, who was our engineer. Stantec is now the engineer for the town as well, since they acquired FST. So, there were some questions and issues regarding that, so we got through that. But as it turns out, the Water Department doesn't feel that the booster pump would be in the best interest of the town because of the eight-inch line in North Street. That putting a booster pump to boost the flows in our project, we have a 12-inch line serving in our project, would adversely affect the existing eight-inch line in downgrading properties. So, we started discussions with the Water Sewer Department and had a meeting with Stantec and trying to come up with a formulation of a proposal. We then, at that point, what was also suggested by the Water Department is maybe the best solution would be upgrading the water line in North Street to the 12-inch line. It's something that the town really needs to do anyways. It was in the master plan, the town's master plan for the Water Department, it recommended that that be the highest priority in town, the replacement of that line. And it also, I think it's on the capital improvement project list for fiscal '19, at least according to the last published annual report. I don't know if there's any money for it, but. So anyways, it was, it's kind of a consensus, I think, that maybe that's the avenue to explore. That's gonna take some time to work through. In the meantime, we're in the process of building units and conveying units. We've conveyed a number already, and we have a number of closings that are coming up, including our first affordable unit, which will happen this month. And the construction of the playground and the donation of that to the town is also tied to the issuance of occupancy permits, so we wanna keep all that in track. So, that was the purpose of the letter to the board. If there's any questions about the letter, we'd be glad to answer them. In discussions with the town, town manager, town council, Bill, it was suggested that perhaps the issuance, the allowance of additional occupancy permits to allow us the time to work through this issue and then setting a time for getting it resolved. So, with that, we suggested the issuance of five additional occupancy permits would get us to October in terms of our scheduled closings, and would, should be sufficient time to get input from the engineers and to work through the issues with the various town officials that need to be involved. So, that's what we're requesting here tonight.
So, yeah, just to clarify, I was CC'd on a lot of the emails over the course of the day. So, the letter you have in front of you, and I spoke to Bill, just so that there's no confusion, is references to the escrow, but they're not asking you to make any decision on that tonight, right?
No.
Or give it your blessing, because that would kick in whether or not you'd have to decide if it's a substantial change. The only request tonight is, I believe that they're asking for five.
Five, five occupancy.
Five certificates of occupancy while this is being negotiated.
And to be put on the agenda for your October meeting, and hopefully by that time, we can report back with a resolution of it.
The original agreement called for six occupancy permits?
Six, yeah. Yeah, we, they actually issued seven.
They've been issued seven.
Yeah. So, we're asking for additional five.
What about building permits? Where are we on that?
We have a number of, we have 24 units, 24 unit building permits that have been issued.
And there was some restrictions on that, too, so we're over on that, right?
Well, no, no, it talks about building an occupancy permit, so I, you know, we read it.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm interested in.
We read it to be, the occupancy, the completion. You need a building permit in order to get the occupancy.
Anybody have any questions, any applicant?
What is ISO?
Insurance Service Office, it's a, I guess it's an organization that looks at insurance issues essentially.
Fire suppression.
Fire suppression, yeah, yeah.
And I just, I apologize again, I'm just trying to understand. So, right now, there is, in fact, sufficient water being supplied to the site?
Yeah.
That would permit for five occupant, for five residential units there?
There's sufficient.
To be safe and to be.
There's sufficient water on the site for domestic water supply, okay? In terms of fire flow, again, it's short of the ISO recommendation, as is all of North Street. The master plan that was done in 2009 identified a lot of areas in Douglas where fire flows were insufficient and with some recommendations for them, but. So, there is, yeah, so all of North Street has that same issue in terms of water pressure for, to meeting the 750 recommendation, gallons per minute, we're about.
Mike? Just curious, the engineer that you talked about, in the original agreement, you had a backup plan of putting in a booster pump?
Mm-hmm.
And now, the same engineer says this will work?
No, it's the town that has raised the issue in terms of the.
But that engineer is now the town's engineer?
Well, they're different, it's the same company. FST was bought out by Stantec. The, what was included in the memorandum of understanding was information that was gathered throughout the permitting process that included input from FST and included input from our engineer. We actually redesigned the project in large extent, went from triplexes and quad condo units to duplexes and increased the distance between buildings in order to get to that, to get to the, basically the same standard.
Back into the lumber that was acceptable.
Basically, get to the same standard that applies for all of the residential properties on North Street.
Was that because the triplexes would have triggered fire suppression within the buildings? Was that a concern on that?
Yeah, sprinklers, a lot of nations, yeah, sure.
Bill, what do you think of this? What do you think of it?
What do I think of it? I mean, we have a decision that the ZBA issued that was very clear on building permits being issued. What I would like to get out of this is better communication. I think we learned of the issue late in the game. Had we known about this a month or two ago, we would have been well underway to resolving this issue. Now, we're reacting, which I try to avoid. So, I hope as we move forward, we're not gonna be in another situation like this, that we communicate better and identify issues like this well in advance of them happening. Now, with regard to this, I think the project should move forward, and, you know, based on discussions we've had in the town, as well as with the developer, we have six people living out there, seven people living out there. The project should move forward for those seven people. It should be a successful project. So, it's a matter of coming to an agreement with the developer on a resolution. What that is, I couldn't tell you.
Okay, but you feel this is okay?
Well, I think it should be discussed, and that's a decision for the board, you know, you have a role, the selectmen have a role, and the Water and Sewer Department has a role.
Thanks, thank you, Bill. Ed, I have a question. I mean, why wasn't this discussed months ago? You knew it was coming, you knew that this day was coming.
We did begin discussing it months ago. We started discussions with the Water Department quite a few months ago.
I spoke to the Water Department, you had one meeting with them, it was like.
No, no.
Just recently.
No, that's not true. We had, we've had, okay, the first issue that came up with the Water Department was when we wanted to get the pump designed, and we went to Stantec. And Stantec got back to us after a time and said, "The Water Department doesn't want us to do this work because we now represent the town." So, we worked through that. We didn't think it was an adversarial situation, and so we had meeting, we had our first meeting with the Water Sewer Department, and that was three months ago. And worked through the issue that we agreed that we could both use Stantec to do the engineering and to, and to make a recommendation to the town. We then had another meeting with the Water Sewer Commissioners with Stantec, in which we discussed the pump, and at that meeting, the issue of maybe upgrading the line in North Street came up, and we indicated a willingness to discuss that. Stantec was to get back after that last meeting, which was May, I think, the end of May, with Stantec, they were going to give us a proposal on the work, and I still haven't seen that, but that's when the discussion veered off in terms of the water line. And then again, we had a meeting with Bill and the town manager and the Water Department and with the fire chief last week in terms of further discussing that. We were hoping that we'd have a resolution of it before we, before we got to the point where we had conveyed, we had closings scheduled all during this period, and then we had to go forward with those.
I spoke with Jay Towne, today, town council, and he thought that the only issue at hand tonight would be to make a decision whether or not to allow more occupancy permits than what was originally agreed to, because this water issue, there is no resolution at this time. Is that?
Yeah, the water issue's gonna have to be negotiated with the department, you know, the Water Department and the selectmen and everything else. So, the only thing you're dealing with tonight is determining whether or not you want to issue more.
And right now, we're one over the agreement. It's seven of an issue in the agreement. How many closings do you have in the next 30 days?
In the next 30 days, we have three. And as I told Jay and town administrator, the five will get us to October, which I think is a reasonable time in terms of resolving it to get us, you know, to get the input from the engineer and to interact with the town officials that we need to.
That's three and a half months away.
Why are you picking October?
Just, that's our closing schedule. The five permits will, are scheduled to close between now and October.
Okay, so, but the problem is that we're gonna, we need to resolve is.
I'd like to resolve it as quickly as you would, Pam. I was hoping we would have it resolved by now, and we haven't. So, you know, I'm, if you wanna say, you know, resolve it by September, but we'll, you know, we'll probably, there's a possibility we'll be back here in September saying, "We haven't quite gotten to that point." If you wanna do a piecemeal, that's up to you.
No, but I'll tell you, Ed, I'm not happy about the fact that my signature is on that, on the approval of your permit for your project, and it appears that we've gotten information that now no longer stands.
It surprised me as well.
Okay, so, we're both in the same spot there. Okay, so we're both in the same spot there, we need to get to a resolution on that. We need to go back to FST, somebody needs to look at the, the recommendations from FST.
Yes, absolutely.
Because that's how this, this project actually went through.
Yeah, I, I'd be glad to sit down and go through those recommendations with you and explain, you know, how, how the, the language in, in the paragraph was developed and, and what the expectations were.
That's, that's part of the problem is that language is developed.
It was our expectation that if the water tower didn't get constructed, and this was, again, this was nine years ago.
Yeah.
And everybody was hot on, on doing something to, to further industrial development. If the water tower didn't get constructed, that the booster pump could be put in and, and would work. And it was, it was.
That's like quote unquote.
The water department's objection to it, you know, in the past few months is as surprised to me as it, as it is to you.
I don't think it's an objection to it, I think the fact is that it's not going to work.
Well, again, I'm not an engineer, I don't know.
Well, the engineers are saying it won't work.
Well, I, I haven't seen that in writing, Pam, but maybe you have.
Okay, no, I have not.
How did it end up that you applied for seven occupancy permits when you were aware you only allowed six?
Well, we went forward with occupancy permits because we had closings scheduled.
You were allowed to do that per the agreement?
Well, I, I understand.
So the agreement didn't carry any weight with you?
No, it did, it did very much, I was, we were certainly aware of it and we were trying to work through the, the situation, Dan. We really were. And would have come to you earlier if we thought that this is where we would be, but, but we, we thought we would have a resolution of it.
Mike?
What do you expect to change by October?
We expect an agreement as to how to, to go forward in, in terms of meeting incentives.
The concern here is fire safety.
Okay.
So.
Actually.
We're doubling the exposure, likely that term, I guess. We're going to get to October and then you're going to have more scheduled, because you just said you had twenty-four permits?
Yeah.
You had twenty-four permits, so you're going to have twelve, twelve units that are going to be close to being scheduled for more closings. I just, I just don't know where we're going to be in October, we're back to the same thing.
Well, I, I think we'll have, hopefully we will have a, a resolution of, of the issue of, of the water line and if not, an alternative proposal for it.
John, sorry.
Your next, your next scheduled closing is when?
This month, July.
July thirteenth, thirty first? I'm not trying to be a jerk, but I'm just asking.
Well.
There's a reason why I'm asking.
The fifteenth.
The fifteenth?
Yeah.
The fifteenth, that's Sunday.
And it's, well, the PNS has a fifteenth, that is soon thereafter, I, I, we don't.
No, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be difficult.
They'll get schedule when we get the occupancy permit, but.
And we're talking about fire safety and we don't have any input from the fire department. And if we had some time to get some input from them, we had to have an interim meeting to make that decision.
Clearly need input from water and sewer, from the fire department. So you have one closing between now and August eighth, our next meeting?
No, we have two, we have one scheduled for the end of, of July. And we have another scheduled for August, I think August tenth.
So the, so your next one's in the next couple of days, you already got all your final inspections on that?
No, no. It'll get delayed, obviously.
Anybody else have any other?
I'm concerned that, that Ed, the project is, and in, is representing the project has overlooked the importance of the MOU and, and that it's a contract with, with the town, so.
Sean?
Well, if I, if I could, yeah.
I didn't want to say, I have a question, I don't know.
A second, Ed, go ahead, John.
I just, the, the, you met with the fire chief?
Yes.
Would it be fair to say that the fire chief was concerned about the ISO ratings along North Street as well as along the?
I, he was at the meeting, he didn't, he didn't express an opinion. I, I don't know if, if anyone else has had this conversation with him, but.
Did you recall the town administrator, if he had?
He's here, he can, he can.
In your opinion, did you take away, what his opinion was, man, he is?
I, I thought everyone at the meeting was in favor of proceeding in this manner. That was my understanding based on that meeting and, and in conversations with, communications with Jay. So it, it's my understanding that everyone was basically on board with, with allowing us to proceed and giving us time to, to work through the issue. And, I've got.
Anybody else? So they're asking for six.
Five.
Five. I don't know, there are already one over the limit.
Not comfortable with that number, I think we need to work, get this done, the end, everybody get together, get it done. I don't want to hold up the project either.
No, I don't know.
But this is a large.
This needs to be honored.
Luke? How many can you live with? You want seven, but how many can you live with?
No, no, I said five.
Yeah, how many can you live with, we can't care about five.
We have, we have PNSs with closing dates before October on five, so that's what we would like to get. Again, that's, you know, it's, it's up to you folks.
Bill? How many of those are affordable, Ed?
One and possibly two. There's, there is, the affordable that we currently have under agreement is scheduled for this month. This is the one that's coming up shortly. There is another that we are, we have an offer on this close before October, so possibly two.
Sean?
What, what do you think the best reasonable outcome in terms of resolving this issue would be? For, for instance, I know your answer would be, well, of course, put in the new, the new pipeline, but probably that's not going to come to pass, what would be the, what do you think? Or does the applicant think that the best reasonable outcome would be to resolve this issue?
To, I, I think the, the best resolution of it for all parties is to come to an agreement regarding upgrading the, the water line in North Street because it's not only our project, Spring Meadow Estates, Colonial Estates, there's probably two hundred and fifty residential units that are served by this eight-inch line that, that don't meet ISO fire flow requirements existing in the town of Douglas. I think, and any possibility of developing the industrial parcel requires upgrading the service. So I think the best solution for, certainly for us, but also for the town is to, is to come to a plan to upgrade that line. And we're willing to contribute to that. In fact, you know, our, the water sewer connection fees that we pay on these, on these units would essentially pay for, for much of the, of the, of the water line upgrade. So it's a, it's an opportunity for the town to, you know, get the line in at, at really minimal out-of-pocket cost to the town. There's, I mean, that's the other aspect of, of, of doing this work is, is seeing what sort of public-private programs might be available through Mass Development or some other grand source that would, that would assist in doing this for the town. So I, I think it's, you know, again, it's, it's the same issue that we had when we agreed to convey the water tower parcel, which we conveyed, okay? And, and, and we're, we will be glad to put in the, the booster pump. And that's what we contract, that's what our contract says, is that either or, okay? So, so we're prepared to, to perform the contract. But the, the, the thinking in, in terms of the water tower parcel was this is, this is the opportunity for the town to get this parcel that they, that they're going to need sooner or later. And if it gets developed, then it's not going to be there. There were two water tower sites in Pine's Pit that aren't there anymore because we took all the gravel out. So again, when we did this back in two thousand nine and now, you know, one of my, I, I mean, I've been in this town for a long time, one of my concerns is, is that the town do what's necessary in order to, to attract economic development. I think it's, it's vitally important for the town and, and this will help.
I, I just want to make sure I didn't misread the letter, at least at the moment, the tone of the letter I took away, that the water department suggested that it's not likely that that would be installed or.
Yeah, the water tower, yeah, the water department has, has told us and, and, but only told us recently. They didn't tell us before we conveyed the parcel to the town, they didn't tell us then. But they've told us now, they have no intention of building a water tower.
Or the twelve-inch, or the larger twelve-inch line?
Well, again, the twelve-inch line is, is identified as the highest priority in the town's master plan for the water department and is on the capital improvement list for, for fiscal nineteen. So I don't know if they intend to, to ever do anything about it or not, but, but it seems like they should.
I think we need to focus on the occupancy situation because that issue is a water department, a fire department. And the issue here is that we agreed to six occupancy permits prior, they have seven and they're looking for more. So I think that's what we need to, and hopefully they're going to come back shortly with some resolution. But I don't think it's anything that we can approve or disapprove.
Mike?
I don't remember your answer, so I might have to ask you again. How many perm, occupancies you looking for this month for closings?
For July?
Yes.
Two.
Two. And when's the third one come out?
August fifteenth.
Okay, so would it be reasonable to grant them the two more so it doesn't hold them up at all and it gives you until the next meeting, which is on the eighth of August, to maybe get some more information from the people that we need information from? And possibly that you can come up with some better information on there as to how they're going to proceed with this?
If you grant them two more, that's fifty, and the extra one they have, that's fifty percent more than what we originally agreed to. I think that's working with them.
I think that's working with them and it's being fair and it's keeping the project moving. And, and I know it's not what you're looking for, but it's somewhat of a compromise. It's kind of a stretch to put it out until October, wait until October to find out that we still don't have any more information. At least this will lay the fire under the project and maybe move it along.
Well, I mean, I, I think, I think we all have to keep facts on the table as well. I watched the water sewer commission meeting, we heard that you attended it and I'm aware that the explanation was given to you about how the hookup fees are broken down. And that really, one quarter, I think, I think that's what it was stated, one quarter of the fees go to water. So the amount of money that would go to full water for capital projects is not, not even close to the full hookup fees. So you're aware of that.
So they're requesting additional five?
Yeah, I think the rationale has been put on the table, I might.
And I apologize, I admit, I'm entirely confused. I, I guess I just don't underst, I, I don't understand at the moment the degree of the risk and the nature of the risk that we're talking about in terms of water going to the residences. If, if there, if exists a possibility that we're getting, we're granting occupancy permits to dwellings that at some point in the near future might not have access to water in some way.
No, there's access to water, there's access to water, okay? Again, it's the, it's the ISO recommendation of seven hundred and fifty gallons per minute at twenty PSI that, that is not met by that section of town. Now there are whole sections of town, including where you live, that doesn't have any public water and doesn't have any fire protection. So, you know, if your house burns down, you're relying upon what they can bring in a truck. So we're, we're well beyond that, we're in the same situation as, as all of the houses in Spring Meadow, all of the houses on Colonial Estates, all of the houses on North Street. So, you know, again, it's.
Those properties that you just mentioned do not have proper fire protection.
They have the same, they have the same pressure.
Which is not enough, technically is not enough, so.
Well, again, ISO recommendations, it's not a law, it's a recommendation, but see as to what it is.
Two hundred wrongs doesn't make, adding to the problem.
No, I'm, I'm just stating the fact.
But using, using our existing water lines, they're usable in that area for fire protection.
It's the pump and the, the, the strength of the pump that is the problem that will cause problems to the smaller pipe that are attached to it, eight-inch pipe.
I mean, I think that's all water issues and fire department issues and.
That's why I suggested what I suggested you do, to allow them to continue on, they can make their closings, being fair about it, gives them a whole nother month, maybe meet with some more board departments or whoever they need to meet with, engineers and come up. He just stated a little while ago, he hasn't even got his quote yet on the design, so maybe that'll.
Is that a motion?
Help move them along as well.
Is that a motion, did you make a motion?
Yes, I made a motion to grant them three more occupancies.
Ed, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mrs. Holmes, to grant North Village three additional occupancy permits. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three additional permits.
One other thing, Troy, please. When you do these closings, do you notify the town on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they know which ones.
They, they issue the occupancy permits.
The closings, the closings, they transfer, transfer a sale, the closings, do you notify the town at all?
The, the closings usually hap, happen within a day or two after the occupancy permits are issued. Do we notify them?
Just so we can keep track of what.
No, no, other than the issuance of the occupancy permits, but.
What's that?
Should be in the decision that notice is usually given, just so they have compliance, because every four of you, every sixteen.
Right.
Just so we can keep track of it, if you, if you could notify a bill or whatever.
Bill has been tracking them through the occupancy permits, but, but that's fine, we will notify you at the closings. Again, they, they have it surely there.
Again, just.
The building commissioner is here, so Larry, you're aware we're, we're only going to allow three, three more at this time?
Yes.
Okay.
A maximum of ten. Because they're at seven now.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could say, talk to the town engineer, keep posted and I'm sure we'll see you again soon. All right, the next agenda item is the public hearing continuation, oh no, continuation. Robert Parent and Carol Dolan, twelve rods on row. Good evening.
I'm always around you.
This is just the same application you put in before for a larger hole, correct? Am I correct in that?
It's for a reduction, we made a reduction in the plans.
Right, okay, but it's the same hearing, we just.
Same hearing.
Yes. She was asking if it advertised, yes, because of the advertisement.
Oh.
It was advertised prior, we gave you a little guidance last time and you're back. It's a lot more, okay. It's a lot of work. Okay. Great, go right ahead.
Okay, we are here, Robert Parent, 12 rods and Carol Dolan. We're here asking for, to see if we can get our plans approved. We have gone, we've gone back to the designer, and from 10 feet, we have now gone down to 15 feet on each side, which was the issue prior. And I think that possibly was a concern of getting maybe a truck or a tractor down, down either side of the facility, of the building, rather. We, you know, we seemed like, I hope that we can, we came to a compromise with the 15 feet, because it is actually probably about 60% of the variance that is looking, that we're, you know, we're going at, which is 25 to 15.
Originally, you had an 80-foot plan proposed with 10 feet on each side.
Yes.
And you reduced it to 70 feet for 15 feet on each side.
Yes.
Other than that, is there any other changes that you...
No, I'm not sure if you recall, but we, we did ask if you, there are other, I know there are other houses in the area, if you'd like to know, to see that much less than 15 feet. I know that they, they're probably grandfathered in, but, but we, you know, we do have pictures of those that you'd like to see.
We're aware of it, it exists up there.
Right up there today.
Yes, and as well as, as, if you're, if you're interested, we do have signatures from the, our surrounding residents that saying that they were, they were okay with the 10 feet, but now we're asking for 15.
So rather than confuse the issue, we'll stick to the 15 discussion.
Thank you.
I've got the original one.
Do you want the plans?
No, 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 the projection plan.
Oh, that's...
Or the peel, projection, sorry. It was a while back. to this application for special permit.
So there was never any structure whatsoever on the property on either parcel?
There was originally, yes.
They took it down last year.
It's a, it's a, there was a structure on one of the lots, it's a combined lot now. So there's two that is...
Under 800 square feet, I believe.
Somebody have any questions with the applicant?
Maybe not.
Mike, you have any?
Nope.
So we had...
So we're rebuilding after demolition.
Correct. And when they were here last, we told them we thought it was too big a house for the amount of land that they had. Looks like they've rethought their plans and come back with something smaller.
More patterned.
They don't have any other questions. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this complication?
Larry.
Larry?
There is. So do show the outline of the house, the deck isn't included in that outline. So the deck would project into the setback.
Right.
It's one, without the deck on the back. So it says 22 feet, but it won't actually be 22 feet from the structure, a structure, part of the structure, to the rail outline. They're going to build a deck on the back.
Oh, I know, there was a picture of that.
If you get approval for this, you won't be able to put the deck on.
It's on the...
Oh, here it is.
The deck would be part of it.
The other thing that we were talking about last time is percentage lot coverage. So roughly, the house is 25,000 square feet.
No, that's incorrect. It'd be about 2100.
Well, if you take 70 times 36, it's 2520. And that's, it's not any of the other stuff.
Which, that's something that other towns have, is a percentage of lot coverage. We don't have it, but it's certainly something we ought to consider.
And, and that would help applicants too, by saying, on, on a lot, I can fit X percentage of house, as a footprint.
Yeah, and I think you might be the existing two. I think we're over by a few hundred feet, not by, I don't consider it a substantial amount, as far as square footage.
I believe what it's worth now is 800 square feet, right?
Right, right. And, and I, the way I thought it was calculated was the livable space, which is going to be about 2100 square feet.
That's minus the garage, is that what you're doing?
No, that's including the, the, the garage.
2100 is including the garage?
Yes.
So how come the math is so different?
That's more than a couple hundred feet. If you were at 800, now you're at 2100.
Well, then, if you had two lots, that was one lot, not the combined lot, so I thought if there was 800, there was a house originally on the, on the, on the second lot, which was not there. So there was the 800 square foot house that was originally there, was on one single lot, which was a 50 by 50 lot. And we now, we then purchased two lots, which is, which we expanded to...
But there was no structure in the second lot, so that's, essentially, essentially, you're going from 800 square feet to 2100.
Larry, on this here, there's supposed to be 30 on this end.
Oh, since 36.
That's why you're going, it's, yeah, I know, but it's 36 on this end, so it can't be on that.
Oh, okay.
Because I was looking at, before, you had 30 by 80. So 30 by 70 is 2100, plus that 3 by 20 is another 60, so you have 2160.
Okay, there you go. So that's how we got 2100.
So the number that was presented on the engineered plot plan was wrong.
His key must have stuck.
Oh, yeah.
But anyway, 30 times 70.
2100, and another 60 for that jog out on the garage is 2160.
So, like I say, if the board would come up with a guideline by saying, you know...
Whatever percentage of...
20% or whatever percent is acceptable, that would give applicants a chance to approach their architect or, you know, and say, this is the size I could...
Back some coverage of this, and then just that.
And then they wouldn't have to come back and forth between, you know, every time.
No, I think that's a good recommendation, so we should certainly consider.
So do we know what size deck this is?
No, there's no dimension.
I don't see any dimensions on it.
What size deck were you proposing?
It was only, it was only supposed to be like a 10 by, I think a 10 by 8 by 10.
Oh, really?
That's much bigger than 8 by 10.
That doesn't...
That's on the old plan.
So the problem is, we need to, when we, when we finalize these things, we refer to plans.
Right.
And we don't have the show now.
What your engineers admitted, said you're 22 feet from the rail outline, and if you build a deck, you're going to be...
Not 22.
It'd be 12 feet, because it's about a 10 by 20 deck, because that room's 18 feet wide, and it's a little bit bigger. It's drawn as a 10 by 20.
Want to see that?
Yep. How would that advertise?
That's what I was looking for. I don't, the advertiser saw it here, because it was months ago.
Yeah, but it's in a briefcase.
I don't think so. My briefcase is in my car. What would be?
The variance is usually... Say there's going to be so many feet, special permits, either it's allowed or it's not.
So it'll be 14 feet off the property, like he's saying, that it'll be 18 feet.
But a variance is to be so many feet from the lot line, a special permit, I don't believe advertised to replace an existing building or do whatever. I don't believe there's any requirements. But we could certainly do something in a decision.
What'd you figure it out to be?
He's going to make it 8 by, 8 by 10.
Yeah.
So he's going to come out with 8 feet.
Correct.
So he'd be 14 feet off the property.
That is correct.
I don't think that's going to work, to be honest with you, because it's like there's a big door back there that's more than 8, and more than 10 feet.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think anybody, at least not over there, they don't need a door that big, or a, or a deck that big over there. But the, the deck will only be 8 by 10.
So this one says...
And that, and that's only a slider, you know what I mean? That's...
I know.
Yeah, exactly.
It's only a slider.
Realistically, it doesn't, the length of the deck's not going to matter, because he's not coming past the end of it. It's just a projection of the house, correct?
I think it's like six of them.
So you have one or two. I got three.
Six.
I want to get three. Carry them up.
So we need to deal with this deck situation.
Yeah, but yeah, it's, the deck, I will gladly tell you that the deck is not going to be any more than 8 by 10. I don't need anything bigger.
Concern of the distance from the back lot line.
Oh, I see.
So you're going to be 8 feet deep, 8 feet from the house to the end of the deck?
No.
Yeah, that's what he is showing on his plan he just drew. So he's going to be 14 feet off the property line.
14 feet, correct.
Instead of 22, he'll be 14 on your plot plan.
Does the plan show that, Mike?
The, his, this plan here, what he did is he was just marking it up, showing me on his floor plan, he's going to come out 8 feet 10. Not the scale anymore, but that's what he's proposing. So he'll be 14 feet off the property line on that.
Correct.
Well, we'll have to just be very clear in the decision, if this turns out to be a positive decision, and the distances...
They just don't match.
We can also...
That's a long plan.
And also ask him to, to submit, make approval condition upon him submitting a new plot plan, showing a deck, and the distance, which is no closer than 14 feet from the back.
An ad build.
Well, you only do the ad build on the foundation, not on the deck.
All right.
So I think...
Well, the ad build could show the deck, absolutely.
The ad build's going to be submitted before the house is framed. Right, Larry? Is that right?
No.
No?
Well, before the, before we even, before the permit, if we grant something, and before, before that's valid, we'd have to have the engineered plans, right?
Yes. That'd be the only way to fly.
Mm-hmm. I understand. So we want to have the...
Shaking the whole table.
As a condition, prior to a vote?
I was terrified.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, I don't think.
Do you want to have a new plot plan submitted as a condition, or do you want it before a vote?
Oh, under condition. I would do it under conditions, yeah. Yeah, this has been going on too long, as it is.
Not really, really.
I have no objection to, during a very specific description, in the special permit, which will very, very much bother their ability to construct. It won't be something where you can just go, oh, well, we kind of made a mistake, you want to do something.
Yeah.
The building inspector won't issue a certificate of occupancy until he's satisfied that he's met the conditions of a special permit. Right, Larry?
Okay, Bill?
So I guess the question is, sir, is that what you want to do? Because what we're, what we're talking about doing today is setting up a special permit, which is going to very specifically define what it is that you're able to construct. You will not be able to deviate from that. You'll have to go with the dimensions that we describe in our oral decision. Would you prefer instead, would you like us to do that to end it today? Or would you prefer to actually go to your, to your engineer, or your architect, or whoever it is, that is tormenting, I mean, who's ever writing these plans for you, and get specific, real definite numbers, with specific, real descriptions? Because you're going to be bound by what we rule, and you can't come back for another two years, once we rule.
Right.
So is the only change 14 feet from the rear?
Right. I, I believe what's going to happen, if we take a vote today for this special permit, is that we're going to use the description that you've given, in this form, laying out, laying out all the requirements, with, I believe, a slight change in regard to the rear yard setback, which would be 14.
Yes.
You're going to be bound by that.
Right.
Which means, if you're going to issue with your plan, the way that it's presently constructed, that could cause you trouble. You're bound by what we've done, and you can't come back for two years to repetition us to build something else.
Right, yes, so really the only...
Do you, do you want us to vote that way? Which I think that there's a consensus the board is willing to do that. Or would you prefer to go back to your, your expert, and get them to give you very specific drawings and numbers, just so you, just so you know, and you don't suddenly find out, oh, I'm in a very difficult position six months from now, or three months from now?
Yep, yep, yep. So we're bound by, by, right?
You're going to be bound by, I would suggest you're going to be bound, and I apologize.
Right, right, which is, which is the difference from...
Is this, is the descriptions, as well as the specific plans, that we're going to read off of, in terms of descriptions that we're making?
Right, which is, which is basically the deck.
Well, it's not just the deck, you have to understand that you don't have an inch to spare. You have 100 feet across, you're asking for 15-foot sideline requirements in a 70-foot house. If you're 14 feet 11 inches from the lot line, you get a cease and desist.
Okay, that, that's understandable, right?
Just so it's clear, the house can be small. Can't get any bigger. So if you come in and you're 15 foot 2 inches, you're fine. If you're 14...
15 foot 2 inches on one side...
Is that true? If we're granting a special permit for reconstruction?
We're granting a special permit not to encroach into the setbacks any closer than what's described in this list.
I don't, is that, is that something that...
That's how I would interpret it.
Yeah, I think that's what we always, I think we'll always do that.
Always done that way.
We always make it less. But if it's 15-2, then it's too close to the other lot line, is what I'm trying to tell them.
Right, no, you can't move it, but it can be smaller.
Right, right, right.
They're going to have a building envelope. So like that's drawn on this plan showing?
In other words, what they were going to be telling you, this building envelope's going to be increased out to the square from what it's, from what's regulated. So they can stay within that building envelope.
I would not have, I would not have assumed that built into every special permit is the ability to reduce the measure, the size of the building, the structure, unless you took it back down to a point where you're just applying for a building permit again. But if I'm mistaken about that, the building inspector's position is that that's not the case, then I may not have a rejection to it.
And just with my own personal experience on projects, if I was less than what was allowed, well, if I was further away from the lot line than I was allowed to be, I was fine. If I was over my, if I was, the variance was 16 feet, I ended up at 15 foot 11 and a half, I have a problem.
Okay, yeah, are you agreeable with that?
So it'll read something like, you'll be 15 feet on each side, 50 feet off the front, and 14 feet off the rear. Correct.
It's 42 off the front.
I'm sorry, 42 off the front. Correct, yes, thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
You, you may want to correct the plot plan just for...
Or he's going to draw another one.
Part of the decision, just so... Part of the decision, just so we're in agreement that this is thirty feet on this side, not thirty-six. Or you could use the square footage of the buildings, which is actually, I took the dimensions of the, of the house, the rear setback, and the front setback, and left six feet, so this is actually a hundred and twenty feet, not six feet, so the size of the house is twenty-two feet. Twenty-two hundred and twenty feet. But you may want to make that part of the decision. Go to it. Still talking.
Go ahead.
What did you say was changed to thirty, this thirty-six?
This thirty-six.
This is thirty.
The jog makes it thirty.
This is six feet over here.
Yeah, right, right, that's six feet there, right?
Is this engineered?
Yep. All right, I understand.
We got to keep that.
So we can make a condition that a new plot plan must be submitted prior to, they get plenty of time to do it during the appeal period.
Yes.
Yes.
Or prior to having a decision signed. Right, that would be a good thing.
And the engineer should be able to easily correct.
Correct, yeah, I agree.
And include the deck onto the.
Did you write all of those down?
If you're going to have a set, is this going to be just a freestanding deck or any stairs coming off it? You may want to show those stairs on there as well.
Okay.
Right, you have any part of the structure, whatever you're going to do.
No, no, taken.
You could do that and then decide you want to have the stairs come off the side, and now you're in, past the house, and you have a problem.
All right, thank you.
Should we give up before the decision's signed? The decision doesn't need to be typed or signed for at least fourteen days.
I, I would assume that you could get a hold of his engineer and have it easily corrected.
Yep, okay, thank you.
All right, so you understand?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we have a.
Not me.
May I borrow your, your notations? So I would move that we approve this special permit being requested, that the limitations in terms of setback requirements, structure height, lot area, are all specifically described in the application submitted by the applicant, and this application is dated July third, two thousand and eighteen. Furthermore, a special permit will be conditioned upon the handwritten notations made on the plan dated April revised, June twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, and attached to a copy of the submitted permit, just previously referenced in terms of the, of the, of the limitations of the sizes of the lots and requirements.
With the amended.
amended condition of fourteen. How much we get?
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Can we just condition that this revised plot plan be submitted prior to us signing the decision? So it'd take fourteen days to get it typed and signed.
Yes.
I think that would be fair, that it'd be part of the file.
Yes.
So I would, so add that, all those add, all of those might, also as part of my motions. And mark off this cluster as exhibit A, or how do you want me to, is that acceptable?
No, that's fine.
And of course, it's the document number.
The two thousand eight, plan number ten, hearing number ten.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Holland to approve the special permit application of Robert Parent and Carol Dolan as described.
In some motion.
We have that motion from Mr. Holland. We have a second, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Special permit is granted.
Very good, thank you very much.
Very much. It's been nice knowing you. We've really gotten to be bonded.
All right, the next agenda item is case number two zero one eight dash eleven, public hearing for David and Barbara Tricon. They have submitted in writing a request for continuance to August eighth, August eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and they have also granted the board an extension on their decision until September twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll move that we approve the continuance for Tricon's case number two zero one eight dash eleven.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr.
What?
Continue that hearing till August eighth, seconded by Mr. Bombara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's going to be at what, seven thirty?
That's correct, seven thirty. Okay, we don't have any other business tonight.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
Make a motion to a judge.
We have a motion by, oh, Mr. Fitzpatrick to adjourn. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Bombara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting's adjourned at eight twenty-two.
Don't you want to do this?